All members of the board are present except for Mr. Kalenda. The first order of business is entering into executive session. The board will be entering into executive session per MGL Chapter 38, Section 21, Exemption 2, to negotiate successor employment agreement for the town administrator. The board will be returning to open session at the conclusion of executive session. Roll call?
Sheriff Lynn, aye.
Shay, aye.
Rashid, aye. Thank you. We're in executive. Thank you.
Good evening, welcome back to open session of the Board of Selectmen. The first scheduled appointment is an interview for a committee appointment with Mr. David A. Nixon. David, if you'd like to come up. First, I'd like to thank you on behalf of the board for stepping forward and volunteering. It's greatly appreciated. If you'd like to just take a few seconds and just kind of give us a little bit of overview of, you know, what you're looking to do and why you're interested and...
Well, I originally put down a couple of suggestions, but at the end, when I had corresponded with Laurie, I basically told her that depending on what the board considered I was most suited to do, I would go with the flow on that. I recently retired. I had started a lumber company in Framingham in 1969. We were brokers of hardwood lumber into the furniture industry, also component parts. We sold primarily the furniture manufacturers in the Northeast and the Carolinas. I'm out of it now this year. My son's running the business. I also, for 1969 until about five years ago, had a place in Florida in Boca Raton, where I was president of the condominium association and also vice president in charge of operations for the club. We had 365 units there and marina, tennis courts, and a beach. Currently, I also serve as a trustee up at Admiral's, on Admiral's Lane for Vickery Hills. I was a forty-year member at Framingham Country Club and served on many committees there over a period of time. At one time with Ed Mezzot, when he was alive from over in, doing a mental blank on that, from the, in Western Nurseries, excuse me. Also with Kevin Giblin. We were co-chairs of the long-range planning committee at Framingham. And I served, I went to Norwich University, served as a first lieutenant in Massachusetts Army National Guard.
Thank you for your service.
With headquarters company and eventually was moved through their reorganization into the military police, where I was the only non-state trooper in a definite minority position. And I just figured, you know, as a resident of the community, that I'd like to be able to contribute. And I had indicated a couple of choices, but there's no specific reason that it would have to be those. have to be those. And I would welcome the selectman's choice of the committee for me.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. You're very well qualified for any committee that we have here in town, and I thank you for stepping forward. You know, there are a lot of vacancies, so this is just wonderful. Thank you so much. And can I just ask, how long have you lived in town? I'm just curious.
Eight years.
Eight years. Oh, okay.
Yes. I lived in Framingham for 40 years. And I basically wanted to stay in the area because I have a son and his family live in Hopkinton and a daughter and her family live in Northborough, so...
Wonderful. Based on the vacancies and the interest that you have with the golf experience, and it seems like you have a lot of recreational, outdoor-type activities that, you know, you participate in and you enjoy as well. We do have an opening on our recreation commission, which I think you would bring a great perspective to, my opinion. I'll leave it to the board. I'm sure other members have questions and comments for you. Mr. Shiffrin?
Thank you for serving. I'll just add, you're allowed to serve on more than one. Think about it.
Well, you know, again, I would serve at the board's pleasure, so...
Again, thank you for stepping up. This is kind of odd where somebody, you know, volunteers and, you know, it's wide open for many opportunities. More often than not, we're trying to scramble to get people to fill commissions. So, thank you for stepping up. I agree with Ms. Baraccio. I think recreation would be a good, would definitely, as you said, a win for that committee as well, so...
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. I received a call from one of your residents up at Admiral Glenn's in your support for detail and seeing that projects get done and that you do things in a timely fashion. So, I think recreation would be a great fit for you.
Very good.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. David A. Nixon to the recreation commission term to expire. Do we have a date?
I don't. Do we have a date, Mr. Purple, for the open vacancy? Bear with us one second here. I know. It's never quick on my phone when I try to do anything. Vacancies, there we go. All right, recreation, it looks like term expiring 6/30 of 19 is the vacancy?
As stated.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir. It'll be a one-year term. You'll certainly be up for reappointment, and at that time, you'll get a letter from the administrator's office, letting you know you would have 14 days to come in and sign in, and we'll forward your information over as well to recreation, and they'll be reaching out to you for your first meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, thank you so much, so appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you for waiting, too. Next...
First things first.
Next up, review and approval of the revised golf course conservation restriction. Attorneys Legere and Town Council, if you would step forward, please. I know that you've met with Conservation, and you had comments from SVT, and it's kind of where we get to the document that we have now. If you'd like to give a brief update as to what's kind of transpired since the last time you were here, and I think the last time you were here was just after it came back from EEA, is that correct? Yes. So, any updates you can give would be appreciated.
So, yes, as you know, we came before the selectman a ways back and got the selectman's blessing on a draft conservation restriction to submit to EEA as part of an application package, which we did through Attorney Serpiano. We did get back from EEA, a pretty significant set of comments on our draft, laid out his track changes. We then met with the conservation commission after SVT, and I should mention Krista Collins from SVT is here this evening as well, so we really appreciate Krista being here to add SVT's perspective, because obviously they're a major player with a huge role in this project. So, SVT added some comments as well. I met with the conservation commission. The golf course conservation restriction committee had also had an opportunity to meet after reviewing EEA's comments. So, when I sat down with the CONCOM, we really had the benefit of a number of perspectives and comments reflecting those various perspectives, and had a very productive meeting with the conservation commission, incorporated the further revisions that they wanted to see based on EEA's comments primarily. And I understand that the draft that I sent back to them reflecting our conversation was, in fact, right in line with what they had expected and what they wanted. And SVT, I believe, added one more sort of minor set of comments after the CONCOM had had a crack at it. And so, the draft that is before you this evening is that draft, the draft that essentially went through the conservation commission and then back to SVT and then back once more. So, there are some track changes shown in the version that you received. There were many iterations of this document going around over the past six or eight months, even since we sent it into EEA as part of the application. I think the last version before this one had, Krista, what, three or four rounds of track changes. So, when SVT got this back from the CONCOM, what they did there, and please, Krista, jump in if I'm getting this wrong, but SVT essentially just adopted many of the track changes that EEA had suggested and that the conservation commission and SVT were all okay with. So, there have been some changes to this document since you last saw it that are not reflected in the track changes in the copy that's before you tonight, but I would really characterize those changes as being sort of a lot of semantics, relatively minor changes, nothing really substantive in terms of what the town was trying to accomplish through the conservation restriction, kind of what the goals and objectives of the document are. Those really did remain intact. There were a few places where EEA had questions or comments or wanted to strike some language that they viewed as being sort of super repetitive. Superfluous is what I was trying to say. And, you know, some of those, the commission pushed back on, and in my opinion, did so correctly, because that language was in there for a reason. There was a lot of time and effort put into drafting the document in the way it ultimately was submitted to EEA. And so, some of the changes that they were suggesting, striking large chunks of language, the commission really was concerned would actually undermine what the town was trying to do, maybe contradict other parts of the CR. And so, those were the areas where the commission did say they'd like to push back a little bit and retain the language. And I think the track changes that you see primarily would fall sort of into that bucket, the kind of remaining changes that EEA has proposed and that SVT and/or the CONCOM want to push back on. And then, there's a few other changes that maybe the CONCOM or SVT had suggested that EEA hasn't seen yet themselves. That's where we are tonight. Basically, we owe the draft back to EEA. EEA sent us their draft with their comments and said essentially, "Take this, review our comments, consider them." No major rush, but come back to us when everybody on the towns and in SVT have had a chance to look over this, and we'll continue the dialogue. So, that's really where we are now. The document that you have received for tonight's meeting is a document that SVT and the conservation commission are very comfortable sending back to EEA. And essentially, we're here tonight to see whether the selectmen have any questions, comments, concerns, additional revisions that you would like to see made to this document before it does go back to EEA.
Thank you, Krista. I was going to introduce you, I apologize. If you would like to take a second, Krista, and just tell us as far as SVT standpoint, I know Attorney Legere was very eloquent in letting us know that the CONCOM and SVT, you know, are on the same page basically with this. Is there anything you would like to add or any, just process?
No, not really, thank you. I mean, that was a great summary, and I think, you know, from our perspective, a lot of our comments really had more to do with just making sure that where things were reiterated multiple times in the draft, that they were consistent, because we didn't want to run into a situation where we're trying to interpret something down the line, and we have two even slightly different things on two different pages, but I think we ended up in a good place. And I just wanted to address the memo that we got today from the golf course. Because I think that was a good point there about the envelope B referencing the maintenance building. And I don't think, I don't think we'd have a problem with, if the maintenance building did need to be connected to the septic system in B, that would be okay, but I think we would need to add language that allowed for infrastructure to go out in between those two envelopes. So, that's, that was all.
Yeah, and I'll, thank you, Krista, and thanks for mentioning the memo as well. Yeah, that's, I believe that the idea here has always been to have a separate system for the maintenance building. I think there's something there already. I'm not sure exactly what type of system is there, whether it's Title V compliance or anything like that, but there is something there for the maintenance building, and the idea is to continue to have a system, I think really just to service that building. And the comment, the good catch here by the golf course CR committee is that in making the changes that the CONCOM had requested, I just overlooked the reference here to the Southborough Golf Maintenance Building, Golf Club Maintenance Building in the paragraph flagged here. So, it's an easy fix. It's really a matter of deleting five or six words out of that paragraph, and that's that.
Perfect. Before I open it up to the board, if the board will indulge me, I see Mr. Pozamato, the Chair of CONCOM, is here. Do you have anything that you would like to add as we've gave Ms. Collins the opportunity based on the negotiations and the contract talks that you guys have had? And again, thank you all for your hard work in getting us to this point.
No, not really. I think that, you know, there was a lot of good, hard work put in. I think we worked in a collaborative fashion, and I think we got the document to pretty much where it needs to be. And some of the things that, you know, Mr. Legere said that the conservation was pushing back on was some of the things that EEA had brought up was, you know, things associated with like fueling of weed whackers and things like that. So, these are definite things that we wanted to make sure that we called out, that, you know, it is a use that's allowed, is a use that's allowed in certain areas, that kind of thing. So, there was a few things like that in the document that we felt a lot of compassion, that we really wanted to make sure it stayed in there and push back on that. And, you know, I think that everybody was in agreement with that.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion for the board. Mr. Shiffrin?
Actually...
Sorry, go ahead.
Mark, actually, before you go, there's a lot of people in this room and not in this room who put an awful lot of effort and work into this document and getting it to this point, certainly the golf course CR committee, everybody here. But I just wanted to specifically commend the conservation commission and the effort that you folks put in. I know that there was disagreement about whether or not there should be co-host status on that, and despite that difference, you and your commission, you know, put tremendous amount of effort into this, and the town is the beneficiary of that, and thank you for that.
Thank you, and I'll pass that along to the commission at our meeting next Thursday. Thank you.
Well said.
The only question I have is if the current golf course manager has reviewed their changes or been part of it at all?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. I think it'd be good to just get their input.
I would, I would add, we've had a lot of input from Andre Forten, who is pretty closely associated with and very familiar with the golf course and its operation. So, we leaned pretty heavily on him for a lot of the kind of day-to-day operational-type considerations that we wanted to make sure we were capturing here. Right? I mean, that's always been one of the main things we've kept in mind here as we work through this, is we need to do this in a way that allows a golf course to actually operate and function out there and survive. And so, your point is a good one, though, I think, that it does make sense to show this as we get, you know, as we're moving down the line here, to the, you know, the individual who'd actually be implementing some parts of it anyways in terms of the day-to-day golf course operation.
I just want to thank all of you. There had to have been a lot of collaboration to get to this point, and Brian said it eloquently, the towns should be very grateful to the number of volunteer hours to get to where we are today, and the document speaks for itself. Thank you.
And I'd like to reiterate that, that I am so pleased to have seen that we got to a common ground, a lot of professional people and support and volunteers together, got to a point where, in the best interest of the town, this document is coming forward. Krista has been outstanding, particularly as we delve into the specifics of the conservation restriction plan, which will need some amendments, but I was always concentrating on the perimeter survey and the A&R plans that cut out the parcel, everything from a conveyancing standpoint, to make sure that we were clear as to what we acquired. But this is probably the most important plan outside of those plans to be reviewed by EEA, and Krista just has the knowledge of what to do and how to approach it, and that's been fantastic. I'm so proud of the conservation commission in stepping forward and letting the state know that there are certain places where they disagree. And in the best interest of the town, they want to keep the language in there. And Luke has been outstanding also, constantly staying in contact with us to ensure that we get the best product forward for you tonight.
Thank you. Well said.
Yeah, well said. Thank you very much. So, any further discussion on the document itself?
I have just one question. You are going to incorporate that minor change about the envelope.
Yes, absolutely. It was an oversight. I should have deleted it in the first instance, and I just missed it.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the clean copy document that we have this evening, but there will be amendments to it as far as the envelope, to the golf course maintenance.
Yeah, if you want to be more specific, paragraph...
You have it already written.
Well, it's, it is a matter of...
Just give me a paragraph.
Yeah, paragraph three, I think it's, yeah, 3C5.
As stated.
Can we also add pending review of the golf course management commission? Committee? Company, sorry. Thank you, in the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, thank you all very much. And Mark, please share with the commission, as Brian so eloquently said. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, discussion of implementing a water enterprise fund. So, we have had multiple discussions over time regarding this. The, in speaking to Mr. Purple as well, we're about 95% of, oh, thank you, Mr. Ballantyne. We're 95% meeting the requirements of what the enterprise fund would entail at this point. My understanding is it's just more formality, basically? Just for clarity?
Yeah, I can let Mr. Ballantyne, you know, give you the specifics, but, you know, the way that we are functioning is essentially as a water enterprise fund. This has been a comment that I think the auditor has made in the last, at least the last three or four audits that I've seen, that, you know, the town may want to consider formalizing into an enterprise fund. And then, the comment was revived late in the budget process, town meeting process, by a board member last year, obviously too late for us to do anything, and given the requirements that we need to have something in place ahead of time, ahead of a town meeting vote, should the town vote to do this, the finance team wanted to come forward, along with Ms. Galligan, and to get the boards yea or nay as to whether you want to move forward with this or not, because if you do, we need to start beginning to put some of that process in place.
Mr. Ballantyne?
The four of us, the town administrator, myself, and Heidi and Karen have met on and off a couple of times just to discuss this. and Heidi and Karen have met on and off a couple of times just to discuss this. The DPW Director and the accountant and myself met last week to kind of go over it a little more in depth. And basically, what came out of it is we pretty much do this now. It's, we, I don't think either three of us have strong feelings on it either way, to be honest. It's sort of an odd thing. If the board chooses to go to it, great. If the board doesn't choose to go to it, great. If we do go to it, it's a matter of some administrative things that we have to do, especially in the first year, to accommodate it. You have to handle the warrant a little bit differently. The budget needs to be voted on its own. There has to be a formal costing policy, as some of the notes I put on here. But we did go through, I went through with the help of these two, of costing out the, of doing a new costing, which we haven't done in a few years. And no matter what we decide tonight, if we just decide to stay the same or go towards this more formal policy, I would recommend that at least annually, we do the update to costing out what the water fund owes the general fund, the general fund owes the water fund. So we did that and I came up with about a $21,000 difference that we're short in our transfer annually to the water fund. So in the scheme of things, it's a small amount over the course of years. It can add up, of course. We would correct that right away. But once we corrected that, for the, for the most part, just going to an enterprise fund is basically a paper move. It's really not going to do anything more. Basically, what we would do is create a policy that would formalize the formulas I used. It does not, we did a little research too, which was good, because most of the communities or almost all the communities that do these enterprise funds, it's not going to account for every hour of everyone's time. It's not the purpose of it. We couldn't do it. It basically has high-level ratios of so much labor and equipment, you know, if a piece of equipment's used down the DPW for a water project and a general fund project, Karen apportions that at the beginning of her budget in a way, which she already does to a certain extent now. Things with health insurance and benefits are all split, as I did in this. You know, it's more of the high-level policies. It's not a policy, though, that's ever going to be, you know, we punch in a time clock, who works on water every single day of, every day of the year? It's not the way they work. It basically works this way, right here, that we're doing now. So that's why, at the end of the day, we felt that it really doesn't matter. It's really the board's decision. I mean, I don't have a strong recommendation either way. It's okay if the board feels that it wants to segregate the water department a little more and formalize that, we'd be happy to do it. If the board is okay with going forward and keeping what we have now and just doing annual update of, to make sure we're transferring the right amounts of money, we can do that. So that's basically, unless anyone has anything to add on that end, where we go with it. In the annual audit, the comment wasn't necessarily a negative one. It was more of, and the town administrator has mentioned this, more of we don't have a lot in our audits, which is a good thing. However, when you get down to sort of the administrative comments, they, you know, there's just sort of opinions, recommendations that really aren't good or bad, just things that the auditor might note that he sees in other communities. So.
I think it's simply a matter of if you want to formalize what we're doing, rather than as a special revenue fund, you'll formalize it as an enterprise fund. But essentially, the transfers that are being done, as Brian stated, are pretty much the same. We're pretty much doing all of the indirect costs, the way that you would in an enterprise fund. And it's, again, formalizing it. And instead of a special revenue fund, it's going to, you know, go to an enterprise fund. At the end of the year, any revenues over and above expenses, we'll then get, when we send all of that information to the state and we get our free cash certified for the general fund, the enterprise fund will get their retained earnings certified. So you'll get two numbers now. And so that money obviously stays with water and, you know, can be used to help defray expenses, to defray rates, things of that nature.
Just the last note, just in looking at this, other communities, the enterprise fund is actually a little more popular than the way we do this now, the special revenue fund. But neither one is uncommon. I'll just put it that way. They're both widely accepted and used in the state. So again, either or, six of one half does it the other to some extent, unless anyone has strong feelings on it, but.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board?
Thank you for doing the work, and Karen and Heidi. I think we need to formalize it because it was suggested by the auditor. Whether it was just a suggestion that we can ignore, I think once it's suggested, we should hear to it. We are doing the work now. I mean, I looked at your budget. It's broken out, but there's no harm in making it an enterprise fund because we're already doing it. It might take an extra step the first year, but kudos to all of you because you are doing it. So let's formalize it.
Mr. Shea?
Yeah, I think that's the way I'm leading as well. And I guess the only question I would have is do you know if by having an enterprise fund, does that increase or enhance our eligibility for any grant or loan programs or any state funding of, is there, you know, having an enterprise fund, is that looked upon favorably for?
I don't think it matters at all, actually, as far as I know. I've never seen that, no, so. Heidi, no? No.
If you have sewer, MWRA has a sewer. I think they still have the sewer rate relief fund.
They still have the rate relief, right, right.
But that's a whole nother kettle of fish. So, no.
So you want to start a sewer enterprise fund?
Well, yeah, we've got to have sewer first to start the enterprise fund, so. First things first.
Thank you. Mr. Shiffrin?
I'm the same. I think if it's a positive on the audit, then we should do it. If it's not a big deal.
I also agree.
Thank you for your reference.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion?
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we set up a water enterprise fund.
Say it again?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And thank you all again for coming tonight and your work in putting this together and doing things right.
Brian, just one quick question before you go. We did talk briefly about this, that when we do it as an enterprise fund, it has to be done as a separate article, okay, from the budget? How does that work the first year? Is it done, is it done as a separate article the first year or just?
No, I believe it's done right off the first year, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, so when we start to construct the warrant, we'll?
Yes.
Yes, correct.
First, yes.
Okay.
And transfer the funds.
All right, so it won't be clean the first time through and, okay, all right. Thank you.
And the paper looks to what? So that doesn't have to carry over to the sewer enterprise?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman's report. I only have one thing I'd like to mention under the chairman's report. If someone had seen, it's a revised agenda. No, no, I'm addressing that it was taken off the agenda. Sorry, no, that's fine. So just to touch on, as Mr. Shea saw, the agenda was revised. Recreation is coming to our meeting on the 17th. That's giving some additional time to get some clarification on the capital plan, as well as, I have spoken to Ms. LeValle, she's here, thank you for coming, and Dorian's here as well, thank you. Also, they'll be able to present some updates at the meeting as well. But I did want to add, one of the things they were going to add, had they been here today, was just to let the public know that on September 12th, at the rec office at 7:00 PM, there's going to be a meeting on Highland Street. And some of the topics are going to be the skate park, basketball courts, and some of the other rec projects. So if anyone is interested in taking part in the discussions and being at the meeting, the public is certainly welcome to attend. Did I get the time? Okay, got it right. So Recreation will be here on the 17th with more detailed information for us. So thank you for coming. So that is all I have for the chairman's report. Mr. Purple?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two quick items. The first one, which is just kind of a brief update, it's a topic we haven't touched on for a while. I got a, I've been notified by the Housing and Economic Development Secretary Jay Ash. He wanted to let me know that there are conversations that are going on at the state level with Mass DOT and various other departments, initiated by Bill DiPetri, to try and find some better egress to the Park Central Parcel, which would alleviate some of the anticipated traffic from that parcel coming out onto local roads. There is nothing concrete at this point. There is, I think they, you know, they're exploring some ideas. When they have something concrete or something to report, they'll get back to me. But he at least wanted to let me know that these conversations are going on. And, you know, if they bear fruit, we'll hear about it. So.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
If I may, Lisa? He'll let you know, does that mean he's going to make you aware that he wants to come in and discuss it?
Yes, I mean, once there's, I think, once there's, once there's, if there's a proposal to do something that they feel that has a benefit, you know, that may help to alleviate this issue, or, you know, keeping the traffic off the local roads, then, and make the proposal more advantageous to the community as well as the adjoining neighborhoods, then, you know, he'll seek some time with us.
Thank you.
Okay. The only other issue I have is not one I'd like to talk about, but, you know, I got the letter and I forwarded the letter to you, so I will discuss the letter. Chief Joe Morrow, our fire chief, has, per his contract requirements, issued a letter informing the board, as well as myself, that he intends to retire at the end of his existing contract. Contract expires March 4th, 2019. Joe has been, you know, you know, here for his entire professional career and has served this community well in his role as a firefighter, working his way up, representing the union and its membership, and as chief. He is, you know, available to help the board as we begin looking at transitioning into a new chief. I think at the next meeting, I'll begin to put together a plan as to recommendations on how we move forward for the board to consider the process. I think it should be the goal of the board to try and get candidates, you know, finalists in front of you in February. I understand that's the same time as we're finalizing the budget. I will tell you that my recommendation is probably going to include consultant in here to help guide the process as, you know, Brian and I and Mr. Peters, you know, continue to work through the budget process and then the town meeting process. And I think we're going to need somebody to help shepherd this. So I will have a recommendation at the next meeting. But I did want to, I did want to make the, it is a public document. I figured I would make sure the board was aware that this was going to be taking place. But again, it's, you know, not something I'd like to announce. Joe has been, Joe has been, you know, he's been great for the town and will continue to be great in whatever he chooses to do, whatever the next thing is for him, so. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. And thank you to Chief Morrow for his dedication to the town. Consent agenda. I would recommend we hold number three before we move forward. So with that being said, are there any other holds or discussion?
Number one, just a simple question.
Okay.
On item number one, on the certificates of training, there's an ask, April, is it April Feeny? There's no date of hire, is that important to us?
Uh, no, the, so the insurance certificate is on file and it's all set. And also, just to point out that the police chief has indicated there is no detail needed for this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion, comments, questions? All right then. Do we have a motion to accept a one-day alcohol license application, Zulus Beer Company, for Chestnut Hill Farm Trail Run post-race, September 22nd, 2018? And number two, to appoint Dorian M. Jazinski to the Southborough Housing Opportunity Partnership Committee?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then lastly, approval to, other matters before the board, excuse me, approval to place the Halloran property under the care, control, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission per town meeting vote? Go ahead.
So, so this is, this was placed on the agenda at the request of Town Council. This follows through on the vote that was taken by town meeting when town meeting voted to acquire the property. The board will simply tonight vote in the wording that's on the agenda to place the Halloran property under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission. And then Town Council will work with Conservation to put together a Conservation Restriction. Again, very simplified document compared to what we're doing now with the golf course. Should be a very standard document. And once that is prepared, we'll bring that to you for your review and ratification.
Thank you, Mr. Purple. So do we have a motion to?
I will move that we place the Halloran property under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission per town meeting vote.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Public comment? Good evening, Mr. Litt. For the record, please, I don't think you need to say your name, but if you could give your address, please.
I'm Tim Litt, Woodland Road. I was sort of hoping not to have to come and make this comment, but I will make it anyway. In the course of digging into some unrelated issues back in the springtime, I noted some issues with the way that the Southborough Housing Authority is structured. It turns out that if, at least my reading of the general laws is that as a town, we should have three elected members. We seem to have four. The state is required to appoint a member. And if they don't appoint a member within 120 days, the selectmen are obliged to appoint that member. That position has been vacant for quite some time. The town website indicates that we have at least two terms that expire in the same year, and yet the law seems to indicate the term should be staggered. And finally, the town clerk, I brought this up to him back in February or January, something like that. I noticed on the Registrar's of Voters Agenda has indicated that if nothing happens, he's planning on putting the fourth position on the ballot for the next election. It's not clear to me that he has the authority to do that, since it's supposed to be the selectman. But in any case, I think it's past time for the Board of Selectmen to act on this and get Town Council some professional opinions looking at this. It's been going on too long.
Thank you very much, Mr. Litt. Any other public comment? All right.
Wait a minute, a follow-up, Lisa?
Oh, go ahead, Mrs. Ballantyne.
Since it was suggested Town Council address the question, could you ask Town Council on behalf, so that we have direction on whether the appointment is ours or it goes to a ballot?
Yes. Mr. Purple?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, thank you.